Good evening, this is Luke Revan, Assistant Manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as online moderator for this regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of the township officials and our residents, this board is conducting this meeting via webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the Township's website on August 1st, consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for the meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is visible on your screen. Members of the Board of Supervisors and Township staff, including myself, are present at the Township building for this meeting. Joining us remotely is Township Supervisor Kristen Camp. All other parties-
What did I say? You said Supervisor.
My apologies, Solicitor Kristen Camp. All the other parties joining us can hear me, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by Chairman Scribner prior to speaking, and that all comments be directed to the Board Chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as moderator of the webinar, to unmute your audio connection. You can do this at any time via the chat feature located on the left-hand side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address before asking a question. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Scribner.
Good evening, welcome to the East Brandywine Board of Supervisors' regular session meeting remote, and today is Thursday, August 20, 2020, 6:30. Reminder, recording device will be used during this meeting, and we're going to open with the oath of office by Judge Faloki for Supervisor-elect George Sherbeck.
I'm going to use this mic. It's my wife's. Thank you. Now, you're going to hold the mic, and you're going to place your left hand and your right hand. I, George W. Sherbeck-
I, George W. Sherbeck-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support-
That I will support-
Obey-
Obey-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth-
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth-
And that I will discharge the duties-
And I will discharge the duties-
Of Township Supervisor-
Of Township Supervisor-
At East Brandywine Township-
East Brandywine Township-
Chester County-
Chester County-
With fidelity-
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Now, you're going to sign right here. And I will count it, okay? We're here.
One should be for-
I made a second blank copy in the event that I filled out the printed version with the name on it incorrectly, so there's only intended to be one copy.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, we're going to switch gears here just for a minute and do a non-agenda item that has arose. The website that we have posted, Luke, if you wouldn't mind reading that aloud. For our attendance participation in-house, we've limited that to staff and supervisors.
Yeah, I'd be happy to read the first two paragraphs of what was advertised, and as I mentioned in my intro, it was advertised on August 1st on our website. "In an effort to minimize public exposure to COVID-19 and to main social distancing, this meeting will be conducted via webinar. No attendance in person will be allowed. Members of the public may join online using an internet-able device," and I provided the URL, which is anymeeting.com, "or via phone," and I provided the phone number. Members, I'll just- I don't want to provide details about participation, but that is-
So, right now, I'm going to leave it as there is a allowance of what we believe to be 26 people in the building, per Governor Wolf's allowance. The Board today is going to, because we did have an unexpected guest, and I didn't want to be unfair and make a decision wholeheartedly, so I'm going to put it on the table right now for a vote, if we are going to allow up to the threshold of the 26 visitors going forward, which is the question that's going to be asked. So, right now, my question is from tonight, well, effective immediately, is my recommendation is that the Board would keep it to the way that they have the stance on the website, which is no in-person meetings until otherwise set, but I'll leave it up to you guys for discussion.
I'm a little bit mixed about it, but I do understand the concern that we did-
And that, you know, I think it might be an incident, like a special guest who needs to make a presentation, et cetera, so, you know, with special exceptions, but I think we should stick with the Board as well.
Okay, so, the vote is that we will, that the Board will keep it to the way that is listed on the website, and we will not be allowing guests up to the threshold from Governor Wolf. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, unfortunately, starting immediately, that's how we're going to do it. The Board has voted. So, we're asking if you please leave, just for safety.
And I submitted, so if they came up with a proper before I know, the amendment beginning with the public file, related to the meeting together?
Absolutely, please just-
Public service-
Absolutely. If you want to put it on the table, I'll make sure that the Board gets it. Thank you very much. Okay, we have an update now from the Office of the U.S. Representative Chrissy Houlihan, so I'm not sure if that's-
Hey, Kyle. Kyle?
Yes.
Hey, it's Chief Edwards, can you hear me?
Absolutely, please go ahead with your report.
Listen, I don't mean to interrupt, we have a major hazmat incident in Exton that we need to go to. We're going to, I'm going to have to get off the meeting, the chief is already on the scene.
Understood, thank you very much. You want us to, do you want me to read your minutes?
If you don't mind, just read the report that we gave you, but we have to respond to the incident to assist Exton.
Okay, thank you for your service.
All right, bye.
Okay, so, we're going to turn it over to the representative for Chrissy Houlihan's office, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Kira, can you hear us?
Hi, everyone, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, well, thank you so much to the Board and to the Township for having me this evening and for allowing me time on the agenda. My name is Kira Florsham, and I work for Chrissy Houlihan, who is our Pennsylvania 6th District Congresswoman in DC. So, within her office, I have two roles, I'm both her district scheduler, as well as one of her constituent advocates, and so, if there are any upcoming district work periods and you request a meeting, you'll very likely speak with me. Otherwise, I do some casework, related mostly to education and student loan questions. And so, we do a number of things in our office, and the purpose of me being here today is just to give a brief overview of some of the services that we do offer, so that we can hopefully explain how we might be able to be helpful, as well as to give a brief update about what Chrissy is doing in DC and here at home. So, there are three offices, I work out of the West Chester office, there's also an office in Reading, and then there's her DC office. We are on max telework due to the rising number of COVID cases, but our offices from home are open from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM every evening, and so, we are working with being able to take live calls from home, but as of right now, if you call in, you will be sent to voice message, and then we will have someone return your phone call within 48 hours, if not sooner. So, some of the things that we do in district, because I think a lot of folks understand, you know, bill passing and writing and such happens in DC, but on the district side, that's where we mostly do our outreach and our casework. So, for example, I am one of the folks that is able to help facilitate a couple of competitions for the community. So, for our middle and high school students, our district is participating in the Congressional App Challenge, which is a competition where kids are able to get in teams and create an original application, and be able to compete for being able to show it off in CC. We also have something similar with the Congressional Artwork Challenge, and we also do a project called the Veterans History Project, which during normal times, we would be able to have someone come and interview you as the veteran, or if you're the direct family member of a veteran, to record your story, record your service, and any firsthand account documents that you might want to share, and then be able to put that towards the project that the Library of Congress is compiling for veterans across our nation. Additionally, Chrissy has been hosting town halls, all of them have been virtual recently. She has hosted about 26 town halls to date, and we are looking at doing more as well, and that information is posted on our website at least a week before a town hall is to happen. Some of the casework that we do, in addition to education casework, is really anything that involves a federal agency. So, for example, right now, it's tax season, so we have a lot of folks contacting us about their missing tax refund for any number of years, it could be 2018, it could be as early as 2019. We also are able to do casework for Social Security, Medicare, especially if there are benefits that have been cut off and you're not quite sure why, you can always come to us, and we can try and find a status update for you. To date, we've had about 3.2, I think it's 3.257 million returned to the district, and we aggregate that data as a means of money that essentially got stuck in limbo, so, anytime we're able to get monies into the hands of constituents and folks that have earned it, deserve it, are awarded it, but for whatever reason they couldn't get it themselves, we do work to make those benefits, you know, able to get in your hands. So, that's a lot of what we do, and then we also do meetings with folks. So, Chrissy will meet with different organizations in district and work with stakeholders, as well as our local and state partners to come up with solutions to our different problems. So, that's a lot of what we do on the district side, and then for a quick update on what Chrissy's been doing in DC, I know most of us are pretty familiar with the CARES Act, as well as a lot of the other coronavirus legislation, and so Chrissy voted for all of those things, as well as the HEROES Act about three months ago, and that does include funding for state and local governments, another round of stimulus payments, et cetera. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for the Senate to come to the negotiating table on that, but Chrissy is ready to go back to DC at any point to vote on that. But outside of coronavirus legislation, Chrissy is doing other things. Specifically, she recently voted for H.R. 2, which is the Invest in America Act, and that's a hugely bipartisan infrastructure package to try and address our aging infrastructure across the country. And by aging infrastructure, it includes everything from traditional things, like airports, bridges, roads, railways, to kind of more modern-day infrastructure, like our internet infrastructure, affordable housing infrastructure, education infrastructure, et cetera. And so, in addition to that, she also voted to pass the NAFTA 2.0, or the USMCA, back in December 2019, and then, as we know, earlier this year, the President signed that into law. So, I'll wrap up. Mostly getting contacted about recently, which includes voting on the upcoming election, as well as updates on the post office. So, regarding the upcoming election, please know that our office, and Chrissy in particular, has been in contact with the Chester County and Berks County Commissioners, Voter Services, and the Governor's Office. We're in a really weird state, because voting is handled by states, but there is a lot of federal money right now, just because of the pandemic, so we are working to make sure that any updates regarding voter registration deadlines, vote-by-mail deadlines, and locations of physical polling places will be communicated and available for everyone to reference. And our biggest thing is, you know, everyone should vote, your voice, your vote is your voice, and so, whatever means that is that you'd like to exercise that, if it's voting by mail in person, we are working to make sure that we have the most updated information for folks. Additionally, an update on the post office, Chrissy is actually returning to DC this week to vote on a bill that she is a cosponsor of, which is the Delivering for America Act. It ensures funding to the post office, specifically through the coronavirus pandemic, and it specifically prohibits the post office from making any changes to its service standards that would result in delaying of mail, or really a reduction in its services. And that's because, you know, as Chrissy is a veteran herself, she knows that so many folks rely on the postal service to get specifically their medications, as well as to pay their bills, and so, that is something that she is getting ready to go down and vote for, and it's something that is very important to her and to our office. And again, as we continue to get updates about the progress on what's happening there, we will also be sure to communicate that out to folks. So, lastly, I'll just say that we want to encourage everyone to participate in the census. As of right now, the deadline has been shortened, and all participation needs to happen by September 30th, so if you have not yet participated in the census, you can do it online by going to my2020census.gov, or by calling, and you can call the English number at 844-330-2020. They also have a Spanish-speaking number, which you can call at 844-468-2020. So, I hope that you all find this information helpful. If there's anything that our office can do to be helpful, I know something that we also do is, if you or an organization you have are looking to apply for federal monies through grants, if you come to us and you identify a grant that you'd like to apply for, you can always ask for a letter of support, and we can always include that for your final application. We can't guarantee that you're going to get the award, but we always say that it never hurts, so, you know, if there's anything we can do to be helpful, or if you are just looking for some resources, if we're not the right group to come to, we will do our best to connect you with the resources that can. So, if there are any questions now, as long as the Board allows it, I'm happy to take a couple, but if not, please feel free to reach out to us after this meeting, or you can also check out our different information and services on Houlihan.house.gov. And with that, I just want to thank the Board again for having me and for letting me speak tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, public comment for non-agenda items. Rules of conduct for the public meetings established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So, we will go ahead and open it up, comment on non-agenda items.
At this time, there's one person in the queue, and that's Jim Buxala, who has joined us by video.
Mr. Buxala, go ahead, you're on.
Good evening, George, welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
I'm speaking to you tonight to ask for your authorization to advertise for bids for Phases 1 and 2 of the Park Improvement Project at Bonneville Mill Park, otherwise known as the Garden Project. You may be aware, at least two of you are, that we put out for bid the Phases 1 and 2 early this year, and the results we got back were orders of magnitude, well, not orders of magnitude, they're multiples of the estimated cost, and they were rejected by the Township. We have since reworked the bid document, we've downsized the scope, we're going to be bidding out a couple of the items separately, I think the soil supply and the water well would be two examples, and the volunteers are going to take on more of the work. So, the general work scope is the same, the bid document itself is being downsized scope-wise, but the elements in that were the same as the previous bid document. The bid document is being prepared by the Township Engineer Panoni. So, what I'd like tonight, the bid document is being finalized this weekend, that's why I'm asking if we can get your authorization to advertise for the bids, that we can get our contractor on board early this fall and get started on the work.
Jim, could you remind the Board what portion of this was going to be with the grants?
This is being covered by state and county grants. We have a 10% match, I think we've committed to roughly $45,000. The rest of the estimated cost is being covered by the grants, and the estimated cost is, again, I don't have the exact number in my mind, but it's around $473,000. So, we're getting a lot of money from the state and the county to do this, and one of the reasons we're getting it is because it aligns perfectly with what they want to promote to the public, and that is namely, sustainability. The Garden Project is going to be focused on native species plants, low-maintenance plants, it's going to be a model and a teaching tool for the community towards those types of gardening, and included in our Horticultural Subcommittee, driving the details of this garden design, are representatives from Longwood Gardens, and we're looking forward, they're enthused about this, we're looking forward to having them actively involved in the park, in this area of the park.
Okay, and just a reminder, because we do have a new supervisor now, this is just for bids, this is not awarding a bid, this is just for bidding out.
Right, the committee does not have the authority to solicit bids, and as Kyle stated, we're not awarding bids here, we're just getting your authorization to advertise for bids.
Right, so, the expenses that would be incurred immediately would be the cost of advertising, and also the labor costs being paid to Panoni to manage the answer questions and solicit the bids.
I'm just trying to get Mr. Sherbeck caught up.
There will be a second point at which you would be able to vote to accept a bid, or to reject all bids.
Yep. And is the $45,000 going to be coming out of a special fund or a general fund? So, I'm going to move it to Luke, because we did discuss how we-
Yeah, well, that was, it used to be a very straightforward question, and now it's a little more complex. Thanks to research done by Supervisor Winters, we've been able to determine that funds for recreation development could be put into a capital fund, so we didn't spend anybody, but we removed the earmarks and moved it to a capital fund. So, I can tell you, matching funds that have already been received by the state were deposited to the Fee and Loue account, not to the Capital Reserve, but one or the other of those funds.
Any other questions?
It will be a capital fund, yeah.
Right, okay. Any other questions? No. Do I have a motion? Yeah.
I can make a motion, I think, to allow Bonneville Mill Crew to put out bids for Phase 1 and 2 again.
Motion? Yes. Okay, I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, Luke, anybody else in the queue?
There are no further speakers for non-agenda items.
Okay, moving on, we're going to hit the minutes of the meeting, I'm sorry, what we're going to do is, the Board has already had this package, so I'll probably, unless there's something, right now, we'll just do the, we'll start out with the minute meetings, but the other Board docs, if you guys have something important you want to add to your package, so be it, but otherwise, we'll just go through it like we have been in the past. So, the minutes for the July 16, 2020 Board of Supervisor meeting- I'll make a motion to- So, I'll second, all in favor? Aye. Treasurer's report?
Yeah, just for clarity, beginning in the July meeting, we started grouping these routine reports into a single item with the idea that they may be passed as a consent agenda, as they are not controversial. Are you not wanting to do that today?
I'm sorry, I-
Okay, so, we had begun to group a set of routine reports-
Right.
-into something that could be passed as a consent agenda, so a motion to accept-
Yep.
-all seven of these items.
So, I think the only thing I wanted to give Supervisor Sherbeck a chance, if he wanted to glance through, because I know he hasn't had a minute to digest everything, but the Treasurer's report, and if you want to take your time on that, we'll go through the other, you know what I mean, maybe make that a little simpler, and that way, if you have any questions, then we can answer them right here, but, so, real quick, while he's doing that, the Fire Department had to run out, they had an emergency hazmat report, so I do want to just touch real quickly on theirs, and then just state some of the obvious. The East Brandywine Township had 13 fire and 10 medical rescues, the fuel usage in East Brandywine was 152.6 gallons, and the total trainings this period were four, average number of personnel was 21, so that's all I wanted to get out for the Fire Department. And Chief, I don't know if you have anything that, other than your report, that you wanted to bring to light?
Other than what I have in the report that you guys are reviewing, I have nothing else to add right now.
Okay. And then Matt, same as you, I see you're in your office, did you have anything you wanted to add, other than your report?
No, I should be fine.
Okay. Scott or Luke?
Well, I would have appeared twice as Assistant Township Managers, which I do not have a report this evening, and then also as interim treasurer, which I do have a report. Would you like me to read the balances into the record?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, just because we're here, and again, because we have a new supervisor.
All right. Account balances for East Brandywine Township are General Fund, $1,650,608.15. Our Fire Services Fund balance is $25,909.17. Our Solid Waste Fund balance is $304,318.14. Traffic Impact Fund has a balance of $1,669,343.1. The Open Space Reparendom Fund has a balance of $2,772,315.18. And aforementioned Open Space Fee and Loue Fund has a balance of $200,270.74, and that is substantially less, and the Capital Fund, which I'll mention next, is substantially more on the basis of the transfer that was the resolution passed last month. The Township Capital Fund, for general purposes, is $493,520.65. The Township Capital Reserve for Public Works Projects is $402,239.98. The Capital Fund for Police Purchases is $138,884.72. The Stormwater Capital Projects Fund is $13,029. The State Fund balance is $407,960.87. The Escrow Funds account- The escrow funds account contains $35,412.51. And the police uniformed pension has a balance of $5,44,802.87. Whereas the non-uniformed pension fund has a balance of $1,573,308.4.
Thank you. Do any of the supervisors have any questions about the treasurer's report or the account balances and bank accounts?
I do not.
Okay, so at this time, if we can get a motion to approve the treasurer's report, the township manager's report, the building inspector's report, the roadmaster's report, the police department report, and the fire company's report.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, township manager's report, building inspector's report, roadmaster's report, the police department report, and the fire company report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to old business, the approval of the final draft of the Brandywine Conservancy Sustainable Community Assessment. And again, I think we have Jim Basala on for this, as well as Bruce Rawlin.
Good evening. Scott had asked me to speak to this. The sustainability study report is the final draft of the document that's been worked on throughout the course of this year. The board approved the work for this, or the study, to be done early this year. There's been multiple drafts of this document put in front of the task force, which includes the board of supervisors and the planning commission. And this is the final version of that document. This document evaluated the township's ordinance with regard to a number of items related to sustainability. And a number of things were identified that we could do in looking at our comprehensive plan. So this document is a guidance document. There's nothing in it that's written in stone, but it will be a good guidance document towards preparation of the comprehensive plan update, which we are also starting work on. Along with this to guide us, there's been any value, we did an evaluation, the task force and David Sweet, of the 2009 comprehensive plan, the goals that were set in there, what we accomplished, what is left to do in there, and things that have become moot, that we are no longer going to address. So those two things together with the third component, which would be a survey of the township residents, which would be done during the comprehensive plan update process, would all combine to guide us to doing the comprehensive plan update. So this is a guidance document. And what we're asking for is your acceptance of this final draft of the document to formally put it into our files.
Okay, Kristen, are you on with us?
I am.
Did you have a chance to read that and you have any questions with it?
I do not. I think it's just a guiding document, as Jim explained, will lead towards, you know, forming the comprehensive plan.
Yep. Did any of the board members have any questions on it? Again, it is guidance.
It's guidance, it's not.
I have no questions. Okay, do you want to? I'll make a motion to approve the final draft of the Brandywine Conservancy. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Scott, I'm going to turn it over to you for the approval of the Vision Partnership Program grant application for the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, this is more of a draft at this time. Basically, what I circulated earlier, actually Friday, and then earlier in the week, was the draft narratives for the eight criterion that we're required to complete as part of the draft, or I'm sorry, as part of the grant application. We also have a draft timeline. The estimate that David Sweet and I decided to use for the total project cost, which we really won't know hard and fast number until the consultant lays out the work scope, is $70,000. We've chosen to suggest a township match of $24,500, which is 35%. The higher our match, the more points we get. The VPP grant amount, if it's approved the way we've set it out, 65% would be $45,500. David and I met virtually with Susan Elks, who is the VPP coordinator for the County Planning Commission Tuesday morning. She gave us some, I'll call them helpful hints, on things to make sure we include in the application. And she went down by each of the criterion to say what they would be looking for. So that was very helpful. There is, the application is done electronically. I will do that once we get the final draft narratives completed. The supervisors meet on September 17, I believe. And at that time, I will ask the supervisors to confirm in a letter that I've already drafted, actually David drafted it and I put it on the letterhead. And George, by the way, I had your wrong middle initial, so I have corrected that in the letter. That letter will commit to the match amount for the township of $24,500, unless we change the amount, which I don't think we will. And also names myself as the person to coordinate with the county and also Luke as the financial person for the county to contact. The grant itself is a reimbursement grant, as have been the other grants from the VPP program, which basically means that the township will pay all the expenses upfront once all the checks clear and the township adopts the comprehensive plan and the revised official map. Only then can we request the grant reimbursement for 65% of whatever we spend. So if we spend less than the anticipated $70,000, we get 65% of whatever that is. If by chance we spend more than the anticipated $70,000, we still only get the 65%. So hopefully, we'll get a consultant that can work within those national guidelines. We'll get started before the grant actually is, I don't want to say awarded. We'll know the award in November of this year. But if we're successful in this, we'll get started with the process to select a consultant and name that consultant in March and then begin the process that we've laid out as far as the survey. Return deadline for the survey, the first public meeting, which is specific for the project. Hopefully, by March of 2022, we'll have a first full draft of the comp plan and the official map. After that, we'll have a public meeting. We'll finalize those drafts at the task force level. Ask the board for authorization and submit to the County Planning Commission still, but another department. Where their Act 247 review. Once we get that back with comments, hopefully there'll be no changes. And we look for adoption considered by the board in December of 2022. So that's my overview. I just, I'd asked the board to make sure that you do want to proceed. Obviously, one of the items is, in the narrative, I should say, one of the items is the fact that the grant is necessary for us to proceed. One of the questions they have is, why is the money necessary at this point in time? And part of that answer is, we're not sure what's going to happen with the budget related to COVID-19, because we've really only gone through one quarter. It appears that financially, we should be in relatively good shape, but it's still very difficult to determine that at the present time. So my ask tonight is to make sure that the board is, will to move forward in the next step with the grant application. You'll have, we've asked for comments on the narratives by September 2. David and I will aggregate those and put a new or revised draft out by September 9, which will be plenty of time for the task force members, the board, the planning commission, to review, to make sure everybody is on board with what we're submitting.
And Kristen, any comments on this?
No, it's, you know, it's a long process. And it sounds like your task force group is a good group to work through it. I would ask, you know, you want board participation, board supervisor participation, obviously, early on, so that you're not having them go down a path that ultimately the board's not going to support. But it's a good process. You know, with a different board today, it may be a different plan than what was done in 2009. And then that comprehensive plan will lead to, you know, looking at your ordinances that regulate a bunch of things, including, you know, zoning, subdivision, that kind of thing, to make sure that they're consistent with the vision of this current board.
All right, and the fact that this is only a draft at this point, when are you going to have a final cut? Are you just waiting to get board approval before you continue?
Yes, to both. Basically, we'll have, I want to make sure that the board is comfortable with us proceeding and a final draft of the narratives and anything else that will be part of the application, which is done electronically. So any of the documents that we have to support this, including, I believe, we're going to include the Sustainable Community Assessment document as a supporting document, along with a letter of commitment from the board. Those will all go into the application electronically. So that has to be done by, the deadline is September 25. As I said, we're asking for comments back by September 2. From all those who I sent the documents to, actually, some of that was done today. And then September 9, we'll have what we hope will be a final cut of the narratives and any other associated documents for people to review before we actually submit those. But September 17, at the board meeting, we'll get the board's approval to physically proceed.
Scott, it may be helpful if you could get, and I know they're not looking for hard and fast proposals yet, but it might be helpful for the board to understand what a typical proposal will be for an all-in, you know, land planner to work with you on a comprehensive plan and whether it's going to be $70,000 or more. Because if, you know, that we know that the match has to be the 35%, I'm just curious, I think the board might be interested in knowing what potential exposure there would be. So for example, if Brandywine Conservancy was selected, are they going to charge you $150,000? In which case, that's a lot more money for the board to invest. So I think that's, I don't really know how much these proposals are going to come in at. I'm curious if you do.
Only because that we're going to, what I will do is the RFQ, or RP, whatever you want to call it, or will more than likely include the limit of funding. We haven't fully decided on that, but I'm sure that we could probably get some examples from John Thylak or at Brandywine Conservancy, some other consultants that do this work. To see if they could provide examples of that.
Scott, can I add something to this?
Sure.
I was wondering the same thing that Kristen was wondering at last night's task force meeting. And I asked David Sweet the question, is $70,000 a reasonable number for this kind of plan in other municipalities, you know, within the last couple of years? And it was his feeling that that was a conservatively high number. So he, I think, speaking for him, throwing his name out there, I think would be comfortable that $70,000 would cover it. And it's a reasonable number based on his experience.
And maybe you said this, but is there a timeframe that the, that it has to be, the match has to be presented and has to be used by?
Oh, you're going to have to commit to the match with the application. That goes in September 25.
But is there a time from after that, that it has to be?
Well, we spend the money and then get reimbursed. So we're going to be putting the money out, which would include our match, but plus the other costs of the comprehensive plan preparation. And then periodically, we would submit reimbursement requests.
But you won't get the reimbursement from the county until the board adopts the plan. And I'm curious, isn't there a timeframe when you enter the county contract for the VPP that you must commit to adopting it within a certain timeframe?
Scott could answer that question better than I.
Typically, these contracts run for between 18 and 24 months. I know that in our 2009 comp plan update, we actually started the project in 2006. The village of Guthriesville got added to that. So we had, I believe, two six-month extensions that were granted. And they were primarily granted because of the additional work that we undertook. So.
Right, so Kyle, to answer your question, you're going to be spending the money as soon as you, you know, if you decide to go forward with it, you hire a consultant, the township will be spending money right away. You won't get your reimbursement from the county until the board actually holds a hearing and adopts the comp plan. And that contract with the county is going to have a timeframe. They're pretty good about extending it if you need it, but it's typically, like Scott said, 18 to 24 month timeframe for you to complete the project.
Well, I'm worried not just about our finances, but a commitment from the county and their finances.
No, once they commit, that money is in hand. An earmark for that. They're getting the money from, I believe, the state. Getting it from the federal government.
Rest my case. Okay, I personally don't have a problem with it. But again, I don't want the committee spinning tires anymore if the board doesn't want that. So I guess, to save you some breath here, we'll put it out there to the board and what your thoughts are on the Vision Partnership Program grant application.
This is something, we have a comprehensive master plan now, and this is going to bring it up.
This is something, we have a comprehensive master plan now, and this is going to bring it up to date, include all the different factors here in terms of land use, water, et cetera, say, so. And you're supposed to do that every so often is bring your plan up to date.
About every 10 years.
Yeah. And I was just going to say, we're at 2009, I think, for our last one. What was our one before that?
It was longer than 10 years, I can tell you.
So we're due, we have, we should do it.
But we've been, to be honest, we've been updating, not the comp plan, but the, 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 the guidance, the comp plan is a guidance document. Uh, it's the overarching, um, guidance for subdivision, land development, zoning ordinance, other ordinances that are land use-based. So that suggests a variety of things, like you said, George, uh, environmental, water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it is, uh, it is, it is a two and a half year process from starting to finish stepping out the, the grant application process. So it, it's, it's something we need to do. The municipality's planning code calls for it to be done every 10 years. I can tell you a lot of municipalities don't do that. Uh, we try to follow that however.
Okay. So I'm not really sure how, Kristen, maybe you'd be better suited to answer this. How are we going to, right now, we're going to be approving a, a, um, not a final copy. So right now, um, we're just giving, I guess, the approval to continue working on the Vision Partnership Grant?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Just consensus for him to keep going and then he'll present it to you at your September 17th meeting for the official commitment to enter the contract with the county or to apply for the grant, I should say, to the county.
And one of the things that Susan Elks said to us, if the township submits the electronic document early, earlier than September 25th, she would review it for completeness. David Sweet and I talked and we discussed it last night. We hope to do that only because if there's anything glaring that we missed, uh, it would give us an opportunity to correct that and resubmit. But I think after speaking with her Tuesday morning, we have a pretty good idea of what they're looking for. The narratives that I circulated, uh, there are certain ones that need to be bolstered with some information. One of the things they look highly at are multi-municipal projects. We have one that's in the works, which is the Cross Township Trail, um, project, which we're working with Euclid Township and West Brandywine Township to create a plan to connect Struble Trail with Hibernia Park with trails snaking through East Brandywine Township, West Brandywine Township. And it starts with Euclid Township, Struble Trail, and crossing the Brandywine at the, uh, Whittaker Memorial Park. We're actively working on that right now. We're, uh, we've worked with, uh, the Columbia Pipeline folks to, um, get their consent, I would say, for where the pilings would go for this pedestrian bridge. Then we have to go out and find funding for the bridge project itself. Once we get that done, that's a major step toward this multi-municipal project. So we'll get, we'll get a few extra points for that. But we think we're, we're in pretty good shape with tightening up, uh, a couple items, adding information to the narratives to get a good grant application. One of the things we're concerned with is we won't know who else applies.
Right.
Susan Elk said that they had some additional money that they did not use for 2019, that they threw in the pot for 2020's spring round, which was round one. She's heard rumors that there may be some multi-municipal applications, which are always, they're usually a higher dollar amount and they could wipe out the entirety of the, um, the fund, which is, I believe, $125,000 for each grant round. So we'll see how much competition there actually is. We won't know that until probably a week after the, the deadline.
Okay.
For our ordinance task force to continue with the Vision Partnership Program grant occasion writing a final draft to be presented to the board on our September 9th, 7th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to turn it back, uh, now I'm going to turn it over, uh, uh, Mr. Van Lou for the award bid for the Hawthorne Drive paving project.
Thank you, Chairman. On Thursday, August 13th, bids were open for our 2020 road paving project. The bid is for mill and overlay of Hawthorne Drive. Um, as you're aware, there's, uh, stormwater work going on in Hawthorne Drive, so this will be the completion of the project. Uh, there were nine bids received. The lowest responsible bidder is Highway Materials Incorporated for $164,448.60. And in your packet, I've included a recommendation from Mr. Kyle Turner, a Cedarville engineer. And I respectfully request the board accept the bid from Highway Materials Incorporated for $164,448.60 for the 2020 road paving project.
Does the board have any questions on this?
The funds for this, the funds for this project will be paid from the state liquid fuels.
And Matt, how much less?
Oh, yeah. Service wasn't informed of that. That's important. Go ahead, Scott.
I was going to say, how much less is this bid versus the bid for the contractor that's doing the, um, stormwater work on Hawthorne Drive?
Um, so the, the original, uh, bid for the stormwater work, the alternate was to include the, the paving. But we, we had that as an alternate. If the price came in higher than anticipated, we would be able to remove that, uh, from the, from the overall bid. So the contractor who was awarded the bid for the stormwater work, the alternate was around $260,000. So, um, we rejected that part of their bid, rebid it, and it came in at 164. So we've saved approximately $100,000 less the, there's, there's costs associated with it, uh, preparing the bids and advertising the bids. So there are some costs, but, uh, we had a substantial savings due to rebid in this project.
Yeah, I, I think that's worth noting because that's an important number that, um, that when we originally bid this out was saved. And that was your decision to go ahead and rebid this. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, that was it.
I'll make a motion for the board to accept from Highway Materials Incorporated for $164,448.60 for the 2020 paving project, which is the milling and overlaying of Hawthorne Road, I'm sorry, Hawthorne Drive. And therefore, start paperwork to request the bond.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to, to, um, to Scott, uh, Township Manager, for the approval of the ordinance task force timber harvest logging, uh, ordinance.
Okay. The approval we're requesting is for the board to approve moving the, um, Timber Harvest Logging Ordinance Amendment, uh, that is in your packet to the county for their, the MPC Required Act 247 review. This project has been in process since June of 2017. And I'd like to thank Kristen and also John Thylacker in particular for their assistance with this. Uh, Kristen and John were part of, uh, I'll call it a study group that was working on a model ordinance from Brandywine Conservancy to try and address many of the issues, uh, including one that affects East Brandywine Township or affected us, um, in 2016. The, um, our current woodland protection and logging standards in section 399 102 of the zoning ordinance. Basically, we had issues that were raised by Deputy Attorney General Robert Willig. John and Kristen, uh, worked closely, um, many lengthy discussions with, uh, Mr. Willig, Penn State's Forestry Department, uh, and others in the Pennsylvania forestry industry come up with a reasonable compromise on ordinance language. The task force is recommending that the board approve the submission of this final draft, uh, of the amendments to the County Planning Commission for their 247 review.
Uh, does the board have any, Kristen, I know you were a part of this, so I, if something tells you, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a balancing of interests. It's, you know, the attorney general takes a very broad interpretation of the acre laws, which are the state statutes that govern and protect agriculture operations. Uh, the municipality's planning code does require the township to allow forestry, which is timber harvesting in all of your zoning districts. So it's protecting the right of foresters to do that use, but also make sure that the natural resources and the environmental, you know, the sensitive environmental features in the township are not harmed when somebody does a timber harvesting. So it's really just balancing interests. The Brandywine Conservancy represents a lot of different municipalities in Chester County, many of which had challenged, you know, ordinances that were challenged by the attorney general. So it was really a collaborative effort by a bunch of municipalities and the Brandywine Conservancy to try to come up with language that the attorney general's office could live with, basically. And, and if somebody in the township tried to challenge it again, the attorney general would say, no, we've already gone through these issues with these Brandywine and we're comfortable with your ordinance. So I think it's in a state to at least send it to the county and get the county's comments. It's a, it's lengthy, but it really, a lot of it's definitions. And then it's really just one section of your ordinance. So there's not, you know, once you drill it down, there's not a lot to it other than changing definitions that deal with forestry. And then trying to get applicants who do this use to submit plans and show you the manner in which they're going to protect the, the land after they do a timber harvest or as they're doing a timber harvest.
Thank you. Uh, any board have any questions?
None.
What was the one topic, what was one section of this that the ordinance task force was concerned about? The language of the reforestation plan?
Steep slopes section. I know, I don't know if Jim's still on, uh, this conversation or not, but, task force was concerned about not, um, not having some language in the ordinance to regulate or, I don't want to say require, but we were trying to come up with language that would strongly encourage, I think is the word we used, consideration of reforestation of steep slopes, steep slope areas. I think we came up with a good middle ground there. I know, uh, Kristen was involved. John Thylacker said that, uh, he thought that what we had proposed were a compromise to that, uh, should work. You'll still have some foresters who may challenge it, uh, that section specifically. But they are, steep slopes are very environmentally sensitive. And if you denude the, the re-cover from steep slopes, erosion is sure to follow. So, uh, I, I believe that section, I don't know what page that's on. I think it's 10. 10? Um, oh. Has to do with the plan contents. Top of page 13, it's number two. And then it's two and then six at the bottom. Uh, those were the two sections where we, um, tweaked the language there. It's two, two A, and then six, um, B, were the areas that we tweaked to strongly encourage the, um, timber harvester to, um, get a reforestation of steep slope areas.
And it was also the, the attorney general thought that if you had a blanket prohibition against clear cutting within those slopes, that that was unreasonable, an unreasonable restriction on forestry and could be challenged. So we've taken out the complete prohibition and said that there may be circumstances where you would be able to, to do such clear cut method. Um, but you need to explain that when you're doing it, you as the timber harvester have to show how you're protecting the steep slope area if you, if you feel that clear cutting is, is appropriate in that area.
Yeah, uh, Ja- Jason, uh, I, I think we took the language as far as we could push it and, uh, not risk another challenge from the attorney general.
Yeah, no, Scott did a good job explaining that. So, uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the August 14th, 2020 version, um, to submit it to the Chester County, um, Act 247 review by the planning commission for section 300, uh, under land use.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Luke, I'm going to bounce, bounce you down to, uh, the next agenda after. I want to, I would, since you're going to be four in a row, let's just keep you rolling. Um, we'll turn, we'll start now to the estates of Downe Ford Spine Road dedication request. And then we'll hit you and you can go.
I'm not hurt at all. Mr. Edelman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for your time this evening. I'm here on behalf of MDG Downingtown, the site developer of Hillendale. And we're here this evening to basically renew a request that was started last year to ask the board to accept early dedication of the main spine road that runs through the development. Um, that's basically the road that goes from, uh, Seven Springs Road, from Township Road to Nichols Mill Road, and then from Nichols Mill out to Creek Road. It's the center road, um, that's been constructed and it's still awaiting the application of the final wearing course. Um, we had discussed this some time ago. The real reason is to get school buses to be able to come into the development. Um, at this time, at the end of July, actually, we had over 117 units sold and occupied. And the current bus stop is located down at the intersection of Nichols Mill and Creek Road. And if you're familiar with the, um, the setup of the development, it's a very long windy road going down a hill. It's not very conducive to being able to serve the residents and their children. Uh, one practically and two also in the winter, potentially, uh, safety concerns for any type of slippery conditions. There's really no place to stop and anyone who comes down in inclement weather in their car doesn't really have an adequate place to turn around. So what we're asking the board to consider at this time is to accept early dedication of that spine road so that the school district, when they will have bus service, will be able to come up through the development and establish stops closer to the residential units and the, um, side streets and cul-de-sacs. Um, I believe Mr. Pierce, Pierceall and other representatives from the township had been on site and discussed this with the representative of the developer. Um, there were certain issues that had been raised, which I believe were in an agreement, in particular, dealing with the fact that the, um, liquid fuels deadline is in the middle of September and the inspection that's going on won't be completed. Um, and any punchless work won't be completed until after that time. So the developer is amenable to paying the township for the missed liquid fuels contribution based upon the linear footage of the new roadway. Um, in addition, we, um, are of the understanding that we'll continue to finish the wearing course of the entire roadway. So that'll be in. Um, we'll still obviously be putting up, uh, maintenance at the appropriate time. And I believe there were some discussions for some additional interim maintenance prior to completion of the overall development. And, uh, and maybe Scott and/or, uh, Matt may be able to pick up some additional issues. But what we're asking the board to consider this evening is a conditional acceptance of dedication, uh, with those items. is a conditional acceptance of dedication with those items being taken care of. And of course, all the other items commensurate with the dedication, the legal descriptions, adequate deeds to dedication having been executed, et cetera.
All right, so here's, I'll turn it over to Matt next on this. But my, my concern would be that the, the development is currently still using heavy equipment and trucks and so on and so forth. And then once this is dedicated, the township is the sole responsible party for, for the damage that occurs. But I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, see if he has any, any, any comments. And we'll just feed off of that, and we'll rally to the board here.
Absolutely.
So earlier this week, I had distributed to the board that the, I, I had assumed that the road was going to be offered for dedication without the overlay. And so I was mistaken with that. And that's, there was an original proposal to dedicate it without the, the final overlay. Again, my concern is the heavy equipment that's going to be coming in and out of there. A lot of times, the contractors, they, they beat up curbs, they beat up the roadway. If you go through, you can see a lot of the, the curbs are, are damaged. So, you know, my concern is that there's adequate funding, if there is damage, to, to cover that after it's accepted.
Okay. And then, just thinking out loud here, I'm kind of of the mindset, so you're gonna have the wearing course on, but I'm kind of of the mindset, and again, we'll tally this to the board, if there was a way to kind of do a before and after with a video log or of some sort, and have representatives, both MDG and, and the site, what happens to Penoni, I don't know. But just thinking out loud, Pete, did you have any concerns with this?
No, I don't, I don't have any concerns. The only thing that I would point out is that if we get complaints of speeding or anything like that, without that final overlay on the roadway, there's not really much we're gonna be able to do.
Okay, Kristen, any feedback from you before the board moves this?
Well, I mean, there's, it's a policy decision for the board. I do think that there should be some agreement in place that there, obviously, there will be an inspection made by Penoni right before you would agree to accept dedication and, and record the deed of dedication. But there should be an agreement in place that they will be required to do another inspection once construction is completed, and pay for any damages to repair the road that have occurred since the date of dedication and the date when all the construction is completed. And they have to be obligated to make those repairs that might have, be necessary because of use of construction equipment on the road. And then I don't think the 18-month maintenance bond should go into effect until, you know, basically those repairs are done, or they've put into the 18-month. The 18-month maintenance bond usually starts as the date of acceptance of dedication. And that, the amount of the bond is dictated by the NPC as being 15% of the cost to construct the road. If they would agree to post, for example, if Penoni, say it takes one year to complete construction. So after the one year, Penoni goes out and does an inspection and says, there's 10 items that need to be fixed, and those will cost $50,000. If they would agree to put that $50,000 in with the maintenance bond amount, I think the township can be protected in that manner.
So what possibility, the 18-month maintenance bond could take place after the final layer was installed, or something along that line? The other question that I guess I really struggle with right now is, I don't really see an issue with school buses, because obviously, your kids aren't going to school right now.
Right, and the, the issue obviously is we're anticipating that they will be going back to school, and this process takes some time. And the longer you wait to get to the dedication acceptance, more things occur that would delay it further. That, this, the situation where the school buses and the school bus stops are now, sorry, it, it's very unsafe and very unpractical. And we just don't want to have a dangerous condition. So what Solicitor Camp outlined is acceptable to the developer. We could also do a variation where a cash escrow could be established prior to the posting of the 18-month maintenance bond, which could be posted at the time that the development overall is completed. And you'd basically be in the same position you would be in, you know, as if you had not accepted early dedication. The, the goal here truly is to just be able to get the school buses to come into the development. And what we were trying to do before was try to get the school district to consider doing that without the final wearing course being installed. But they didn't respond, or didn't respond favorably. So we have no other option other than to complete the road, and then, you know, offer to the township for dedication so that the school district will come in considering it to be a public road.
So now, I guess, even decisions that are gonna be made today, you probably have to go back to, to FPG and discuss them with them anyway. So, so tonight, I don't know what we can officially say or not say, because you would have to get permission, correct?
Well, no, I actually have authorization to do what I just said. So unless there's something new that comes from the board, if it's a condition that's based upon what Solicitor Camp is stating, you know, in terms of those conditions, they're, they're acceptable to the, to the developer at this time. And we'd be subject to Penoni's review and approval of a, I guess, an interim, or, as Kristen had suggested, prior to, you know, maintenance bond posting cash escrow. I would suggest it's probably better to do it during the interim period, so if there are repairs that are necessary, they don't exacerbate and get worse. So if the cash is up, the developer's still there, they can go out and make the repairs. If they don't make the repairs, the township has the ability to make the repairs and not have to, you know, look for the funding to do so.
And maybe you said a specific cash amount, but I didn't hear one. Did you?
We don't have one. I think it would be subject to Penoni coming up with that amount.
Problem, so if the board makes this decision right now, it's basically making a decision to allow Penoni and Kristen's camp law firm to continue working with details of this. I don't, I personally don't have a problem with it, but, you know, we're not gonna be able to nail down the exact dollar figure.
Yeah, Kyle, I don't think he's asking you to do that. I think he's just saying generally in concept, can the board support a dedication process that's a little bit out of the norm, for the reasons that he's outlined? And if you guys, as a board, support that, he'll work on, you know.
Getting those numbers.
Sort of speaks to what we just talked about. He'll work with Penoni, and then they'll present that to you, I would say, and then before you would really get the deed of dedication.
Right, we also need to know what the liquid fuels number is too, as well, so.
Right, right. So I don't have a problem continuing the discussion with Penoni and Kristen's office. Obviously, the board supervisor should be kept abreast of everything that transpires before it's 100% official, but do you have any?
I'm good, it'd be all written up in the agreement.
Right, right, yes. So, so pending, pending the board's final approval, but we'll go ahead and, and based off of our discussion here, we'll allow this to continue going, and we'll get the, hammer down the detail.
All right, we'll, we'll work on getting those agreements to you as quickly as possible.
Okay, Kristen, do you need a motion on that?
I don't think so. I mean, I think you, if the consensus of the board is to let Greg go ahead and proceed in that fashion, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think the record will speak for itself. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.
Where you go, Greg.
Yes.
What I was gonna say is the, the development is scheduled in two phases. Phase one is probably, if it's not 75% complete, it's very close to it. And the subdivision ordinance permits this to occur. Now, typically, we don't have a setup like we have here where there's the, the spine road is still feeding phase two. So I, I, I think that the, that we can put the, the requirements in place to make sure that the township is, is secured, as, as Greg and Kristen have said. But there, there's, there is language in our ordinance which does allow the developer to make this request when they reach the 75% one. I think they're, they're very close. It's 117 growth units now that are occupied, Greg, or?
That's correct. I leave 117 as the end, as of the end of July. So there may actually be more than that at this point.
Right. So it's, it's pretty close. The other item that we really haven't discussed is the site meeting that Matt and I attended with Nate Klein, Matt McAlum from Penoni, Mike Tolio from Metropolitan, Chris Leister from Schlock, and there was another gentleman there. I can't remember his name. That Township Road from Seven Springs Road and Outwell Road is to be widened and leveled and repaved. So, and that's part of the settlement agreement. As far as the school district, they may not, they may not go into the development until after the New Year. I wanted to wait until the board made its decision this evening to advise Shelley Groff, who is the school district's transportation coordinator. If the board is willing to take the, or accept dedication of the spine road, that will trigger the school district to consider how they're going to service the development. And I suspect what they're going to do is establish school bus stops within the development on the spine road, and then out along Township Road. Because right now, they don't go down Township Road because a school bus and a car can't pass because the cartway is too narrow. The expectation is that, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's gonna be between 16 and 18 feet in width, the final paved cartway for Township Road. Is that right?
Sorry, I muted myself. I think I was giving feedback. The roadway will be 20 feet wide.
Oh, well, that's why I asked you. So that will allow for a school bus and a car to safely pass.
Correct.
And that should allow the school district to, you know, they're gonna have to determine what the, the busing route is going to be to officially transport the children that are along the route. Right now, they go out Hopewall Road to Creek Road, and then south on Creek Road to, to the development. They're picking up students at both ends, at Township Road and at Seven, I'm sorry, Nichols Mill Road and Creek Road. And as Greg's, the Creek Road stop is not a safe situation other than the fact that it is on the, the passenger side. There's really not a safe place for everybody to park, especially in bad weather. So this will allow the school district to come into development. If they choose to come into the development and find a place to turn around, that's, that's up to them. But hopefully, they would go out Township Road from the development and run their route that way.
Okay. All right, Greg, thank you very much.
Thank you again. Have a good night.
Okay, now I'm gonna turn it over to Luke. He has a, a few here in a row. So we'll start out with the board schedule, meeting schedule, and the meeting format.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked for this agenda item to discuss two matters with members of the board, the composition of the board, and I'd like to just revisit this. First item I'd like to discuss is the format of the meetings for the duration of the COVID-19 health emergency. And the second item I'd like to discuss is the possibility of returning to a two-meeting schedule based on the, the volume of business before the board in the last few meetings. By way of background, we have been meeting since March via AnyMeeting, the webinar platform. Those meetings and the recordings have gone to YouTube. And at this point, they have been viewed 622 times, which is not gonna win me a golden play button from YouTube, but is, isn't, I think, an impressive figure for citizen engagement. My general observation is that, that actual participation in commentary was higher than before times when, when you needed to physically attend. Our June meeting was over three hours, and our July meeting was over two hours. I, I do feel like there is a sufficient volume to justify returning to two meetings a month. I'd also mentioned that the, the board has met in, in now three different formats within the, the context of using AnyMeeting. Originally, we were meeting in a way that everybody tuned in, members of the board and staff, by whatever computing resource they wanted, from their homes. I was physically in my office, Scott was physically in his office. That was the original format, right up until July. In, in July, because we had an unusual deliverable, which was the interview of candidates to fill the vacancy created by Ken Ader's resignation, we began allowing certain invited guests in, and the board was sitting at this dais and, and speaking directly to the, to the interviewees. Likewise, the vacancy board meeting this past Monday, and again tonight, for the purpose of, of having the judge physically here to, to swear in a board member Sherbach. So I, I guess, I'll create this in, in bite size. I'll take the second question first. Is it the consensus of the board that we should continue meeting once a month, or, or return to twice?
So I don't have a problem with either. I would, I would state that I think, once we're post-COVID, meeting in a, in a full-time capacity of, of, let's start with 26 or more members, I think it's a, probably a necessity to go back to two, for sure. I, I, I would say we're, I'm trying to say this, but we're probably half through the meeting right now, and we're going on an hour and a half. So I'm, I'm fine either way, so.
I think two is good, based on the volume. I mean, you, you're saying there's a lot of business that needs to be done, things that need to get decided on, say. I think this whole COVID situation is probably bringing a halt to a lot of people and trying to get things done. So, you know, for that sake and that reason, I, I would, I would go for two.
And Jason? I almost have to agree that we should go back to two for a little while, just to kind of regroup and, you know, it's not, I think it's better, I think our staff would prefer that as well, so they're not, you know, trying to get jammed.
And I think it will help with the paychecks. I know I've come in here a couple times last two weeks to sign checks. So you wanna put a motion to back to two, starting, I guess, effective for September?
Well, actually, you, you, you direct hit on my ulterior motive in this case. We do require two signatures on checks. And throughout the COVID emergency, I found it difficult to, to, to round up those checks without physically seeing members of the board more frequently than once a month. So that is, I, I will acknowledge I, I have that bias. The, 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 the question you pose is, when should we begin?
Yeah, because Labor Day is coming up on the first.
Exactly. I would submit that the first two-meeting month should be October.
I agree. All right, so I guess we'll make a motion to, oh, I'll let you.
I'll make a motion to, starting October, the first Thursday, we'll conduct a morning work session again. Same time as we had prior to moving to one meeting a month. So we'll have, starting October, we'll have two meetings. First Thursday of the month, and the third Thursday would be a meeting.
And, and just, just as a friendly clarification, you mean morning meeting for the, the first Thursday?
The first work session would be October, the first Thursday in October.
And it was a Thursday? They were both Thursday meetings, not a Wednesday and a Thursday? Or it might have been?
A, a long time ago, it was a Wednesday and a Thursday. Most recently, prior to swearing in the supervisor Ader, it was the same day.
Well, it's just easy, remember, you have the supervisor meeting.
First and third, first and third. I'll second that motion.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, is it going to still stay 6:30 for your regular meeting?
I don't, I don't see any reason to, well, that's a good question. We were at 7:30.
Why was it put to 6:30?
It was put to 6:30 because we were trying to balance everything into, into the one meeting. So, so, but I will tell you, there were several, several double meetings that we, we were having that were. having that were going into the 10, 11 o'clock hour. So, so perhaps 7 o'clock, is that a good, a good fit? But, hold on a minute, so the board's staying, the staff is staying here regardless, correct?
Yeah, well, now, now we're getting into the, the second part of my question, and if you don't mind, we'll wrap up the, the first part, which is how frequently and at what times.
Yeah, so what I was just alluding to is the staff stays, obviously, they're not all within a half a mile of the road. So I, I, I don't mind if you were to keep it at 6:30 to alleviate you guys having to stay here an extra two hours and twiddle your thumbs. I'm okay with that. So are you okay with that? Is you nodding your head, George?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, to help them out, anything to help the staff out.
All right, so, so we'll do, do a morning, morning meeting at 8:00 AM and a, and a 6:30 PM evening meeting. The first Thursday will be the 8:00 AM and the third Thursday. And then Kristin, do you have any issues with that?
No, just that we probably should redo an ad because the ad that was done at the beginning of the year, you know, has been changed. And this will, are you agreeing at this point in time that these are going to be virtual meetings?
At this point, I think, yeah, we're going to keep it the way we are unless we get a challenge from the governor's, the governor's order of 26 people in the room. Obviously, we're not doing anything deliberate, we're, we're doing things where we feel is best for the public. I would say we will probably keep it there until we all feel, and I agree with you, knowing that is.
All right. Make a motion, starting October 1st, first Thursday in October, we'll start having our work session at, starting at 8:00 AM. Also have our regular session the third Thursday, which in October would be, October 15th, starting at 6:30 PM.
I will second the motion.
Real quick, and then we're going to continue, just adding in addition, we're going to continue our meetings virtual until otherwise set by the presiding board.
Okay, I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for your consideration. And, and as it relates to virtual meetings, there's a couple of different ways a virtual meeting can happen. I, I feel like there's been a great value add in us being able to make eye contact and we're able to preserve our social distance. Those watching at home can kind of see how widely spaced we are because everybody appears as like two pixels each. But I think there's some value in us being able to, to actually physically see each other. The, the trade-off is, is that it does appear as though we, you know, folks at home can't see that we're presenting into a completely empty room. There is no public here now, but it can create the impression that, that we're excluding audiences if we're all in the same room together. So I, I just want some clarification, or we want to continue these online meetings, each of us in our own rooms, or shall we continue to meet at the dais in this format?
I think the way that we're doing it today is probably the best because we can obviously address the immediate staff issues and, and know what's, what's a, a real problem. We have our chief and our roadmaster and obviously our fire department representatives online. All boards and volunteer groups are online. I think the way we're doing it, me personally, is working out probably the best. Do you agree?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Before we get off this topic, and I didn't even think to bring this up until you brought up schedules and meeting formats. I think this is probably a good, a good time to address some of these issues we've had in the past, that we, we, I don't know if to issue some of these questions, there's a difference between board members switching in and out and, and the way the board was directed to handle things. One of one, one of this chain of command for solicitor and staff. I'm kind of thinking off the cuff here, so you guys can comment.
Kyle, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yes.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt, we can't hear you.
I appreciate it. What we're saying is, we, we are now on our, on a totally different board. We've had, we're on our third, third board member in the last, say, year, year and a half that's, that's been new. Directions sometimes slipped through the cracks on how we, we handle these, and since we were just talking about board meetings and, and scheduling the meeting format, it, it dawned on me that we should probably get some clarification on how we were going to handle things. The things that come to mind was the board chain of command. If there was a set chain of command, dealing directly with the solicitor and staff, it's gone different directions. At one point, it was the, the chairman was basically the, the lead to, to address questions and concerns to staff and, and supervise, and solicitor. Then it changed. We had another time where we had the authority to direct staff or vendors to, to look into certain requests. We had a, a third issue where we were trying to get clarification on board's direction with staff, if they want documents so that, that board members weren't disrupting their, their, their paperwork. So I feel now is probably the best time, since we have three board members here, to discuss some of these things. Honestly, I just said those off the cusp, I wrote them down as quick as I possibly could that I thought of them. Is there anything that I'm missing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm driving the camera and I didn't notice that you were looking at me for comment.
Can you guys think of anything that I'm missing that we've talked about that we should probably get out? And Kristin, you're probably just as good as a person as any to ask that question. Is there anything that, that we, we should discuss now and get it open with in a public setting?
I, I, I will, I will start with, with, with a couple. In, in 2018, when Supervisor Winters took office, we had a conversation about communication and the, the carbon copying of emails. So that's one subject. My understanding of that direction is that when we were talking about doing original research for a member of the board, or if, that we were to carbon copy all members of the board. So if one were to, to ask me to pull a record, I would respond to all parties.
Okay, so let's start with these one by one as we think about them. So the first one was, I don't know if that made sense to you, George, but, but basically, if, if, if I wanted.
I went to any staff member and, and wanted something, what I got is going to go to you two. That's fine.
You're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so for, we'll just do these, and again, I don't have, I don't have a, a professional standard here, I just jotted down chicken scratch. But, so for the, the direction of, of staff to carbon copy all board members on a single board member's request, I would say we're all in agreement on that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Luke, I'll let you rattle these off as you go, and Scott, feel free, Kristin, feel free, if you guys have it. Now's as good a time as any to get these out.
The, the second relatively common occurrence is we get a call from a resident who asks to physically appear on the printed agenda. They say, I would like an agenda item. This has also been a, a moving understanding of the relationship between staff and the board. My preference on, on that is that the, the, the agenda is a one-to-one relationship with the chair. And so my preference for so-and-so asked to be on the agenda is a question that's posed from the staff to the chair and carbon copies the other. But I don't think we need, that's, that's too strong a statement for my, my preference would be, if the chairman says, yes, give so-and-so an agenda item, then they are placed on there. And, and bear in mind, this has no, the sunshine law says if you would like to speak on an agenda item or on a non-agenda item, you may do so. This is just a question of who appears on the printed agenda.
Okay. And what is your thoughts on that?
On the agenda? Well, I was going to ask, one, who sets the agenda, and two, do I have an ability to put an item on the agenda?
So that, we'll just transition this all to the same question. So, so basically, we had it set up for set business days, I believe it was, what was it, 10, 10 business days or so that it had to be in, or seven business days?
The Friday before the meeting.
The Friday before the meeting. So the meeting was on, so. It, it basically racks up to about six days.
Right, so, so the, what, the deliverable for the agenda as a, as a product is a draft goes to the board of supervisors on Friday, and it is posted for the public on a Monday for a meeting that is on a Thursday.
So the, then the second part of that question is, if a particular person wants to be on the agenda, i- is that, is that enough to just go through this, through the chairman, or did you want it to be approved individually by the, by every member? By the, by the, by the resolution we have at the beginning of the meeting, the chairman sets who, the time allotted and so on and so forth. So that's, that's, that's what the question is. Stick to the, the way we were doing it, where they ask the chairman, and if there was any statement that he's, we usually try and figure that out.
Staff ask the chairman to put something on the agenda?
If it was an individual, not.
Oh, if it's an individual citizen.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, I, I would say for.
Proving those requests to get on the agenda.
And I, I don't think that we've really had any.
Right, I, I'd say this is just for an external party asking to be on the agenda. I would say for an internal party, be it a department head or a member of the board, just to ask, and you're there. I, I've, I've never turned down a member of the board or a, a department head appearing on the agenda.
And the failsafe to that is always, they can always speak it.
Without, without putting it on.
So you, you okay with that? So do you want to make a motion for, for that then? Or do you want to just, how, how do you want to do that? Want to state how you would prefer it to be?
Um, yeah, that's a, that's, that's an interesting way to phrase it. That, so as it relates to external parties, the motion would be that permission is granted at the discretion of the chairman and.
I think we should say presiding officer.
Presiding officer, sure. The, the discretion of the presiding officer, an external party can, will request an agenda item, so long as the request is received before the Friday before a meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
As, as stated by.
Stated by Luke, as far as the policy on individual requests to be on the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Can I just add in that regard, though? If the public is getting the agenda on a Monday, can I get all my paper copies of the items on Monday so that I have Monday to Thursday to read?
Oh, we sometimes will get two, we'll get one that's, that's, it's a draft, and we'll know, and then if something were to tweak or someone drops out, we'll, we'll, we'll get it.
Okay, so there are, the material is available.
And by the way, your, your email got shot back to me today, so I don't know if your email is, I was responding to one that came through.
I think that was my fault, I had his name spelled wrong, I fixed it.
So, so there's a, okay, so.
It was East Brandyline and not E. Brandy.
Okay. So we, we have to figure that out.
So I, I, let's, let's talk about the different types of agenda items and when a finished product can be available. So just speaking in the product that I'm responsible for, which is your treasurer's report, I, I never produce that before the Wednesday before our Thursday meeting, and my incentive is to wait as long as possible so that when I cut checks for you to sign at these meetings, there's an opportunity, I, I don't hit print on the report until I've cut as many checks as possible.
I, I got no problem with that. More, it's more the technical, it's more the reading, it's more the analysis that's going to lead to a decision. So no problem with the treasurer's.
Okay, and, and so similarly, would be my deliverable once a month, which has typically or historically been an assistant township manager's report, and it's typically been heavy on event planning.
Right.
You know, historic, all of that's been canceled, so I've said very little in that capacity for months. I could produce that well in advance, and I have no good excuse, but it's often warm when you arrive here on a Thursday because it just came off the printer.
I think we're coming down to key items where decisions and analysis has to be done. If I get those Monday, it gives me the days to really read through it and be prepped, prepped on it.
Yeah. Luke, do you have anything? One that I was just thinking of is we, we, we had a discussion about this, and it was, I think we voted on it in a public meeting, about staff getting direction from the board for material. And the way we handled it before is, most of our documents are behind lock and key, and if staff were presented on business days, again, I don't know the details, we were to have the document left out. How, how did we do that?
Uh, that was a, that was a complete written policy that, that the board adopted shortly after Supervisor Aeter took office. I want to say maybe April, we voted on that. The, so there was a, there was a host of things. Among the items in there was that original records are not to leave the building. Among the things in there is that while the board has unredacted access to, to most record sets, that access cannot be shared with third parties without first going through the review associated with a right-to-know request. So, so while my social security number appears in, in my personnel file and you as supervisors can access, can access my personnel file, you couldn't make a photocopy of it and give it to a third party because that is the sort of information that we redacted in a right-to-know. So there is a whole policy we adopted, and I don't remember all the elements offhand.
So where, where were you with the, the vote on that?
I think that I would rather it go back to not having to bother a staff member to ask for keys, that, to go back to the cabinets that were unlocked prior to 2018, we, we should be unlocked, and we should follow the second-class code, where the only documents that should be locked are, is our ordinances, you know, book that are passed. And even the, even the, the 2000, even the current files, as far as all of our commissions, minutes, finances, everything, basically to the left of our mailbox, those three cabinets can still be, remain locked. But rather than having a key locked up in some of the desk drawer, I think that the board should have a key in a lockbox out in the open. If we wanted to get into, to view current invoicing, we can. And then all the personnel files should be locked up in a filing cabinet, no access because we don't need access to personnel files.
All right, so I will state, and I think that, I'll, I'll leave it this, I did my staff one-on-ones, and I will state that the reason this was brought up was because, I want to say, six out of 10 staff members were concerned that there was going to be a blame for them if something was mislocated or, or, or put in the wrong spot, and that was why, and, and, and that was why this, this became a policy. So the, the biggest concern with this is, you know, albeit, I, I agree that supervisors should have unconditional rights to, to documents, I don't think it's fair if a document were to be accidentally put in my briefcase and, and I wanted to, to look at something, that there, there was a liability factor for a staff member when it was not accountable for. So that was the biggest concern, it was an accountability for a document when it was asked for, signed out, you know, obviously not hindered, it was given when asked for on business days, but it wasn't giving unfettered access for, for us to come in and go through people's documents, and they're ultimately responsible for us.
Kyle, I have a suggestion. Why don't we get the policy that was adopted and recirculated to the board so George can review it and see if he has comments and concerns?
Yeah.
You and Jason can give him your opinions on it, and if it needs to be tweaked, you tweak it.
So how does that, since it was an adopted, is it still an active adopted policy until otherwise changed?
Yeah, I mean, technically speaking, it doesn't have the force of a law, it's just a policy of the board, but this board can change that policy.
So we'll leave that one in, in effect until otherwise stated. Another one that was, I think we kind of, we, we kind of touched upon this, but the board chain of command. We've done, done this numerous different directions. At, at some years, it was, the chairman was the one that, that dealt with all staff-related issues, one-on-one, and, and solicitor requests through the board. Other times, it changed where it was haphazard, meaning if you had a concern that you wanted to bring up to a staff member, you would relay it to the, to the board, and I was the one who'd ultimately would have the discussion with the staff member. If there was an issue that you wanted something looked into, and it was private in nature and you, you asked, rather than you calling Kristin on her cell phone and Jason calling Kristin on her cell phone, the chairman, you would then ask me, and I would then relay the, the question concern, and then, you know, we would.
Kristin, that's fine.
Right. You okay with that? So, so I guess we'll, we'll make it a motion that the, the chain of command with the solicitor and the staff, so that we're not all hindering, hindering staff and the solicitor, will be the chairman and, and, and/or the presiding board member at the time.
We all, since we copied on emails, as far as our solicitor and.
So, well, let's, let's hit this one in and we'll go to that. Okay, so, so we're all in favor? Do I have a, a second on the chain of command?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Jason. So Jason had one that he wanted to ask now and I guess we'll hit that.
About popping the full board on emails from our solicitor.
Is it, Jason, is that to every staff person I send an email to or is it just for the board? When I send an email to the board? Because I typically, almost all cases, if I'm sending an email to the board, I go to every board member. If you're asking me to send and copy you on every email I send to every staff member, that's a different policy and that's, I can do that, that's bringing you into a lot of minutia.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's kind of opening up Pandora's box because I can tell you that there's probably, I've, I can count numerous times where I've come in that Kristen and Pinoni and Scott are all discussing an application or something like that. So I mean, I think we would be inundated if it was everything other than a board decision. And, I mean, I've sat in here numerous times for a half hour, 45 minutes waiting for Scott or Luke to get off of a conference call regarding something that we would have to get clued in on every five minutes.
Well, I just feel that, I don't think that I've been copied on, on the documents that are on the correspondence that I feel that I should be. Had this, you know, a bunch of times now over the last several years and I thought we had, to alleviate any concern, that was what the board originally had requested, just copy the board, whole board on all correspondence.
I just think that we're going to get inundated. My, your email just got filled up. My email's been filled up since I've been here three times now and I'm not even getting copied on all the, all the latter, latter effect items that are getting handled on day-to-day. The email, I mean, I hate to say it, but that's why we have the right to know. If we needed to know something, clearly we could, we could find it out, but I don't know if we want every single, I mean, we're talking hundreds of emails that are going to be coming on a weekly basis that, in addition to what we're already being inundated with.
Well, I mean, I think I, you know, I think we should try it and then what's yours? What's yours? And we say no.
Well, I'm assuming that when Kristen deals with staff, it's not a kind of a decision type thing. It's transactional, it's informational with staff. I mean, if I, if this decision doesn't have to be made on that and we don't have to get involved in the transaction or things like that, I don't want, I don't want that kind of stuff from, you know, that Kristen has to copy me on it. It'll get there at the end when all the information's been put together.
Yeah, we're kind of getting the cliff notes at the end, which is, which is better. So I would be a no for that one as well, just because I don't, my, in the last month, my email's been filled up twice and Luke has to continually go in and delete. It's just getting out of control.
No, as long as the board, all three of us are getting the information, that's all I ask.
All right, and this last one that I had was the authority to direct staff and vendors for certain, for certain items. We are stewards of the taxpayers' money. I don't feel as though unless the board as three agrees that I should have the right to ask staff members or vendors of any, including the solicitor, to look on something that's a high priority case for me because it may not be for you and it may not be for Jason. So, so my concern with that is, agreed with board and supervisors, but the three of us, my position would be to make the board decision to, when it's costing taxpayers' money, that the three of us, if someone's looking into information for one of our causes or cases, that it should be, the board should agree before any taxpayer's money is being spent on looking into questions and answers for a particular issue.
If taxpayer money is involved, if taxpayer money is not involved.
Anytime you're, so staff working for a question, let's just say I wanted, I wanted Luke to dig into tomorrow, the timber harvest and I wanted him to go and get me all the, all the information that he has in the last five years. And then I got Scott dragged into it and then I called Kristen and asked Kristen to, and you guys say, I don't want them looking at that, it's wasting taxpayers' money and time right now, we have more important things. This was another hot topic with, with my one-on-ones is that people are running rampant looking for certain requests and sometimes it starts to eat up into obviously the day load of their required field, but also taxpayers' money.
So you mean like, for example, I made a request to Luke to resend me a link to Dropbox for escrow funds and whatnot that I had to get the board's okay to even ask them?
I, I'm suggesting anything that's going to take staff time or vendors' time that's costing a taxpayer money, that we should all be in agreement that it's a mutual request, not just a one-person request. Because it, as I said, what would make my, my request any more important than yours? If I were to give you an example, you just said, what was your request?
Yeah, no, but I'm, but we all understand things differently, we're three different people, so I might understand, have a different level of understanding than you, so it wouldn't be important to you, but it's important me to understand.
Okay, but my point, my point is if you state what you just said, you asked Luke to look for what?
For a, to resend a Dropbox.
Okay, and then I say to Luke, Luke, that's not important right now, I need you to look into the fire budget that we used last and you're going to say, no, mine's more important than mine. And I'm going to say, no, stop working, this is what's going on.
I thought we just, I just said when you have a chance, maybe a chance to, within a reasonable amount of time like we discussed.
May I, may I chime in on this? I have some experience having served as the right to know officer or the assistant right to know officer since my, since I joined the staff in 2014. The simple fact is, is that the right to know law makes all of staff always have to jump and pull records for anyone who requests it. So I'm fully accustomed to having my schedule altered at a moment's notice by someone who says, pull the permits on my house or something to that effect. And we're required to respond to that within the period of time that is described by the, by the right to know law. I think where the distinction is, is not Luke pull X records, which was actually the request that Jason had sent to me, is Luke conduct original research. Now, now that's a little different. When you say calculate the potential yields based on millages for the next 10 years and a projection of what the assessed valuation of our township will be in five years, that's not a record that exists and it's probably some math I had to throw together, but it probably take me eight hours of labor to go through it and I'd like to know that there was a consensus of the board to engage in such a research project. So I think the distinction is between pulling records, which I'm accustomed to doing, and original research, which I feel like I would like feedback on.
All right, so for verbiage purposes, how about the same with vendors? If I'm requiring a vendor to look up the information, they're charging us. This is being charged to the township.
Then there should probably be some agreement because you are talking money, but you're here, you're not talking money.
Right.
Right to know. And I think an employee, if I'm hitting an employee for several requests, I expect them to come back and say something either to me or to another board member saying he's, you know, he's unduly taking my time on the requests.
All right, so for the, for the staff required documentation, we would state that it would be anything that's not being a hindrance or extra, extra.
A project, like a whole research project, a big monster project needs to be approved by three.
But any direct staff, any direct dialogue with vendors would have to be a, and that would be any vendor would go through a board decision of, a decision of the board, correct?
Right.
You're okay with that? Okay, so, so the next one, we'll make a motion to.
We have all copies anyway. We should have all of them.
Yeah, but if you're going to a vendor to ask them to get you the information, it's totally different. They're not saying, yeah, hold on, it's my job. They're saying, yeah, that's $75 an hour, I'll get back to you tomorrow and we don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm the same. We should have it already, it should really be not made questions for vendors.
So, so the board's authority to direct vendors will go through, will go through the board of supervisors as a whole, which I guess fall back on to the chain of command, which they would give me directive to go ahead and ask that, that chain, a command to the vendor. So we have a motion on that. You guys want a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the authority to, to allow staff to work on in-house projects, things that are not of.
Monetary value.
Monetary value. That that can do, be done as long as it's going through the three supervisors, not necessarily for approval, but for their alertness.
Alertness.
Okay, so a motion on that? Earn your keep.
I know, earn my keep. A motion that we can go to staff with requests for information, but also letting the other supervisors know that that has been done, if it's something like of a significant nature.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then Kristen, is there anything you can think of that while we're all here we should, we should hammer out?
No, I think you've covered a lot of it.
Okay, and sorry, that just got me thinking when you said meeting formats and board schedule, just now is the perfect time to dwell on that. Luke, I'm going to turn it back over to you for now you're going to go to item D.
Yeah, I will try to be brief. The second-class township code authorized non-employee members of the board of supervisors to participate in health plans offered to employees. To participate, the supervisor need only submit during a public meeting notice of his or her intent to do so. At this time, staff would like to report for the record of this meeting that we are in receipt of a memo from Supervisor Sherbach declining to participate in any of those plans offered to staff.
Okay, thank you. And you can kick on right into E.
Okay. At last Monday's vacancy board meeting, vacancy board chairman George Sherbach was selected to fill the vacancy. Earlier this evening, he was sworn into the position of supervisor. The positions of vacancy board chairman and supervisor are incompatible since the purpose is to break a tie if necessary in the event of resignation. I would therefore at this time ask that first, the board consider a motion to, to make formal that Mr. Sherbach is no longer the vacancy board chairman and second, that the board provide direction to staff either about advertising the vacancy or that you make a recommendation to appoint someone to fill the vacancy.
Okay, so I've only had two requests. I'm sure the board has had requests as well. I'll just tell you, the only two requests that I've had over the course of the last year would be I've had a request from Michael Maleski and I've had a request for Dennis Mulhern. Both of them I think are phenomenal. Those are the only two people who've asked me and I'll ask you guys if anybody's asked you or had any interest that you know.
Yeah, I've got a request from Dennis and I thought, at thinking, you know, beyond the furor that occurred with this past vacancy board election, that Dennis would be a real good person because he's the tax collector, he's well-respected, his judgment is his thing, and he's not going to be a person running for the board more than likely because he's the tax collector. So in this case, he would probably wind up being just a pure tiebreaker. So I would nominate Dennis for the vacancy board.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I think Dennis has been stellar in every way, shape or form for his commitment to the township and the things he's been able to do, so I would, would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, vacancy board is filled, we'll move on to township provided cell phones and laptops for supervisors. I don't recall where this stood. I thought at one time we were going to get laptops, but then it may have changed, so it's been a while.
Right, so there's, I'll just start at the beginning. The township provides cell phones for certain classes of employees here at the township. We have a discount plan available through AT&amp;T Wireless that they provide for first providers and municipal employees. Unlimited plans are about $45 a month. The reason that this is an agenda item is actually to discuss a number of technology related items. First, should we extend the class of employees or people associated with the township who are able to get cell phones to the board of supervisors? That's part A. And part B, would, who among you is interested in receiving a cell phone? And then the part that we have discussed historically in great detail is the use of township-issued laptops or something for purposes of meetings. And my recollection of where we left it is, all of us have gotten very accustomed to taking notes all over the materials in front of us. And so we had, we had actually not opted out of having digital copies of the agenda is where I recalled it. But that said, there's no reason why we couldn't get laptops just for use of administratively segregating those things that you do for the township for purposes of right to know. If you had a laptop that was issued by the township, you could always be confident that your personal and your business professional lives are always separate from your work for the township. So, so first there's the cell phone question and then second, there's a laptop question. Should we buy laptops and then who here is interested?
Yeah, so for me, I conduct all of my township business on my township email, so I'm, I'm okay. I'm a big note taker on my hard copies and I keep, keep those with me, so I have them for notes and memos. So I'm okay with not taking them, however, I'm also okay with another supervisor taking them if they should, should want them.
I'm okay.
I know you, you have a company cellphone.
I have a company cellphone, say, and that's, you know, and I guess that could go anytime, but I don't want to do anything on that company cellphone. It's supposed to be for work use.
And then how about an iPad? Are you okay?
I don't have a computer at home.
Okay, so, so.
So I'd rather, I need a way to respond to township email.
So let's, I'll make a motion that we approve the cellphone and the iPad for Supervisor Sherbach. I'm okay at this time and I believe Supervisor Winters is okay, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you forgive, just a brief tangent, Kristen, Supervisor Sherbach has indicated in the vacancy board hearings and in the July board of supervisors meeting that he would decline any compensation. Do we have any, any issues with him receiving these devices?
Not if they're being used for purposes of conducting his township business as a supervisor, I do not believe so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, I think that ends you, Luke. I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Sherbach for the discussion of emergency management.
Okay. After Tropical Storm Isaius, I started wondering how we, how we were set up or what do we look like in terms of a next disaster coming on board in the, in the area? So I asked, and I had not had the opportunity to meet the new emergency management coordinator, Mark Ferrary. So I asked Joe Edwards from the fire department if he wouldn't mind sending up a little informal discussion meeting so that I could meet Mark. And in attendance besides Joe was Bob Nye and Supervisor Winters did attend as well. Basically, the township has made, I don't know if people know it, but have made a remarkable appointment, Mark Ferrary, just a quick background on him. Miller's, Millersville University, he has a Masters of Science in Emergency Management. He's now, right now he's starting his own business, but he's involved in the technical security controls, protection of sensitive organizational equipment, patient information for healthcare organizations. Military experience, four years in the United States Air Force, and he served in Euclid Ambulance Corps for several years, an officer, Glenmore Fire Company several years and an officer, and currently at East Brandywine Fire Company since 2015. So his credentials are impeccable and I was impressed. What's, what's he done to date, just to give you an idea? He was appointed by the board in January of this year. Scott got him the current emergency manual operation to look at. In February, March, the government, the governor has to appoint him as the emergency management coordinator for a township. That's submitted, received. Then all of a sudden COVID hits and things slow down, but Mark didn't. Mark requested PPE from the Emergency Operations Center. He has a real good rapport with, and Scott, you probably know the fellow as well, the head of the Chester County Emergency Services is a Turner?
Bill Turner.
Bill Turner. He's got a great rapport with him. Well, what did he do for us during the COVID time? He went and got 70 N95 masks, 100 surgical masks to the police and fire department, 24 safety glasses, 10 packages of wipes to the police department, two gallons hand sanitizer, spray bottles, surgical masks to the police. So he got as much equipment as he could to supply, to supply both the police and the fire department. So from now, for the next couple of steps, he's got to get the team together, township manager, police, fire, emergency man, himself, and they've got to sit down and first. And they've got to sit down and first thing they're doing is reviewing the emergency manual. They feel it needs some more hazard identifications and what are all the resources that are needed when a natural disaster occurs? Do we need electricians? Do we need buildings? Do we need food? Do we need plumbers? What are all the things that could happen that we're going to need different people or resources? So that's number one that he's doing. Number two, he would like to establish a township emergency management Facebook page where it would be managed by him and it would be the sharing of information. So during a disaster, what is the county saying about weather, shelter warnings? And he would also put on their preparation tips and education about disasters. So that's one thing for the board to, to look at if they're interested in that. Second, he would like to, since he's starting a new business and he will be available, but he would like to have a deputy EMC. And he's asked that we consider Bob Nye, who has some experience at Westchester University with security. He's asked that we appoint him as the deputy emergency management coordinator under Mark. Third is, when they start getting some things, they may be looking at a very small budget, they would come to us, say, so. And the fourth thing, if I can pick up from Scott, do you still have the mobile, emergency management, mobile phone? He asked me if you could give it to me this evening that I could get over to him. So I was impressed, I, I thanked Joe Edwards for not only setting up the meeting, but recommending Mark as the emergency management coordinator. And I applaud the board for appointing him because you got a person that I think will really jump on this subject.
I would like to meet him, I, I've never met him, to be honest with you. I, I'd like to, to, to get to know him and just get some information. Not his fault, but I ain't supposed to imagine it, it's just, obviously, after his appointment, we, we, we got stuck with COVID, so.
I would say, give it a couple months, you get the team together and he does a presentation at a, at a public meeting.
Okay.
Or you could just, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I, you know, meeting right now is a little.
But he is, he is an awesome individual and like I say, I think this area is being tackled real well.
Thank you. Subdivision and zoning applications, I don't believe we have any, Luke Scott?
No.
Okay, ordinances for resolution and consideration, don't think we, other than the, what we had talked about earlier, correct? Public comment on agenda items.
I last solicited comment just before eight, then managed to talk for an hour, so I, at this time, I have no one in the queue.
Okay, and Supervisor Winters said he would like some.
Yeah, I, first, I wanted to say that I think the board recognizing public work crew, Eric and Kyle, who have picked up around the township for additional duties that they normally weren't accustomed to when other fellow members were out. Also with retirement of Mr. World, you know, Bob, so. He stepped up and helped out the township, and I just want to recognize.
I do have one question, and I saw it, I guess because I saw a lady thank the road, the road department. Matt, can you tell me what, is it limited chipping available for citizens, what that is?
You're looking for a chipping policy?
No, I think it was just, you know, a citizen got something done by, you know, your crew. And then when I went on the website, I saw that lim, I think it said limiting chipping is available. And I wanted to know what that is in case I got a question from a citizen.
Okay, we allow one chipping or fifteen minutes per calendar year, per address. Anything over fifteen minutes, they're charged twenty-five dollars for each additional fifteen minutes. And at our discretion, we can stop chipping. If someone has like two hours worth of chipping out there, that's too much time to, for the road department to devote to that. They, a person who has two hours worth of chipping should be hiring a contractor or whatever. But other than that, it's worked out well. The guys do an excellent job cleaning up afterwards, we get a, a lot of thank yous, a lot of great job guy. And it's been a very good service and I believe the, the residents of the township appreciate it.
Thanks.
And then also, I also, we have a lot of litigation right now and we have a new board member. And we have some different cases that are, briefs are due. I believe one is on the twenty-seventh of August, another one I think is the first weekend in September. And I think that board, it would be wise. The question continues of, continuances of sixty days to allow the new board to kind of be activated. And try to, you know, see if there's any, any mitigation available or whatnot before we start spending taxpayer money.
I would, I would comment on that, that I would leave that up to our law firm, that that's their job to let us know what, what they believe. We can get away with continuance and shouldn't. I would also recommend that a one-on-one executive session, so to speak, with the solicitor and any other vendor for that matter should get Supervisor Sherback caught up to speed at his, at his leisure. I think it's imperative that discussions, unbiased discussions without Supervisor Winters and myself are held with even any vendor that you seem, you know, to, to want to have a, a sit-down and get caught up to speed.
Okay, no problem, just set it up and go and do it.
So, so obviously, since Kristen, you're on the phone here, is there a time that you could get together with Supervisor Sherback? Is there any day in particular that are more?
Yeah, we, we can arrange that, and, and as to Jason's first point, the, the most pressing deadline is a brief would be due on August twenty-seventh. We've already reached out to David Brooman, counsel for the plaintiff, and we have an extension until September eleventh. It is important though that we meet as a board in an executive session to make sure that this current board understands what the current litigation is and understands what the township's position has been to date. And if the, the board wants to give a different direction on, you know, we have to talk, we have to talk through that all. And it's important, but there is no pressing matter due until September eleventh at this point. There's no other pleading or response due prior to, Mr. Brooman responded that we have an extension until September eleventh.
So our next, our next meeting is going to be later than, than, so I think, here's what I think. I think if, if it suits both of your schedules in the next week, if, if you guys could, it won't need to be advertised because it would only be one supervisor. If perhaps, since obviously the biggest monetary value in a, in the township is, is, is legal, I would say if Supervisor Sherback and yourself could, and your, and your staff could get together in the next week. And then I would say that we should try to schedule a advertised executive session for some time, possibly the, and again, it's going to be hard because we have the, the holiday coming up, but it might even have to be directly after the holiday or just before the holiday, just in case you need time to prepare for whatever you need to do.
That's fine, and, and I'm sure that they'll be willing to grant us another extension if necessary, that's not, should not be a problem. So I agree, let's, let me meet with George, and then I think we as a board in an executive session should meet as well.
Okay.
I still think though, what's, is there, is there any disadvantage to us requesting continuances of everything? Just, you wanted permission by August sixth to, to fulfill a deadline of August twenty-seventh. You know, so that right, really, right now, if something's due September eleventh, it's already August twentieth, it's already kind of at that same time limit. So I, you know, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, you know, I don't know if it's going to pass or not, but I'm going to make a motion of, a resolution of board of supervisors of East Brandywine Township to request the courts and all parties involved in current land development litigation, cooperate with the board and obtain continuances for a period of sixty days to allow the new board member and the new board a chance to get up to speed with the litigation and determine whether or not one or more of the disputes can be resolved through negotiations and discussion. Therefore, I would request that the board reach out to all parties to get consent and to join in on our request for continuances.
I will not be seconding that, I think it's costing taxpayers money and you're asking taxpayers to also foot the bill for staff and vendors to go ahead and start reaching out to, to multiple people in this, in this township, which I think would be a hindrance on, on their time and taxpayers' money.
It's being paid for by developers, so.
What, I, I don't understand where, where we would be spending more money, we're, we're, we're just.
Kristen.
We're holding off.
I, I, again, I don't know, I, I personally think if you're, if you're requiring vendors to, basically, you're requesting staff to reach out to all vendors, anybody involved in these cases, all, all attorneys for any case whatsoever, which is clearly going to be staff time, it's going to be vendor time, reaching out to solicitors time, reaching out to, you're going to have documents being typed up, you're going to have documents being corresponded. I see, to be honest with you, off the top of my head, I see easily twenty to thirty hours of legal time just to get that to be a passed bill, so to speak.
What say you, Kristen?
I, I say that I, I can't speak off the top of my head right now on all the different litigation matters and what the next steps would be. I do know the one matter that a brief is due is the one that we already have a continuance. I would, we can take this back, I, I would rather have the list of the cases, because there are many, in front of me and to be able to inform the board, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good move to do that. I think there's very significant litigation that's been filed against the township. And I think by asking for a continuance, number one, there is an intervenor in all of these cases. I think they're going to very strongly object to that. There are potential ramifications if the township were to, to, to follow that course. I would like, as I said, the opportunity to explain to the full board, you know, where all of these cases are, what the township's position has been, and what the downside for changing your position is from a monetary standpoint against the township. It is ultimately the board's decision, and I don't want anyone to think that I don't realize that, I do. It is your decision to direct your legal counsel how to proceed, and you have every right to do that, but you need to do that with information and an understanding of what the consequences will be. And I can't speak to those consequences right now on what Mr. Winters is asking to do. I can tell you that we will not be prejudiced and that we, we have an opportunity, we already have until November eleventh. I don't have a problem if you would like me to go back and ask for a further extension until the end of September, because I do agree that that is, you know, a rather short timeframe. So on that one particular filing, I'm happy to go and make that request. I don't think there's any other pending matters that are going to be coming up within the next sixty days anyway. But again, I think that we can, you know, have this conversation after we have another executive session.
I would, I would agree, but I think though, the cost of writing a brief is much more, much greater than a request for continuance because it's, it's a request, it's not, we're not demanding it, we're, we're requesting the judge and all parties, intervenors, and the people who are, who are in litigation only concerning land development to, one, the case is going to affect the other, so we need to be, we can't just continue one because that's what's pending, we get prepared, and that's just doing it across the board. And that's, that's in my opinion judicial economy by just saying it's sixty days. I mean, let's, we're not going to be able to meet, I think our meeting right now at the end of September is the third Thursday, and you're looking at, so right now.
I'll have direction after an executive session from you, you can give me guidance in an executive session on legal matters.
Yeah, I would agree, and, and I just think it's, I think it's, one by one, I don't have a problem with as the case arises and to talk it through, but there could be a domino effect of, of pushing one case to, to the next. We don't even know where COVID is going to be, if COVID is, starts to get, pick up steam again, we could be, we could be pushing cases for, for another year at, at best anyway, so.
Yeah, but cases aren't being pushed right now, and that's the thing, and, you know.
I don't know, I haven't been involved in cases, but I do know that, you know, I, I'm not going to second, I agree with Kristen on this, but again, you're.
My concern is that there's no, it's a continuance request, it's just on hold for sixty days so we can get as a board together. It's not going to negatively affect the township, it's not.
But Jason, what I'm, what I'm telling you is I don't know what I'm requesting continuances for, because I don't know, I can't speak to you right now about all the different pleadings or whatever to do in the cases.
I mean, for, for negotiations, decide of whether or not we could mitigate some of these disputes. One could affect the other, one, maybe we get rid of two, may, you know, so to, to do a case by case, it's one project.
I would like to think that negotiations are going on at all stages of the game anyway. So I don't think that, having sat down through many negotiations, I can assure you that there's been nothing new brought up by anybody to me in order to, to reach a negotiation. And I will tell you, fifty-plus, a hundred hours has been, has been used in negotiations and settlement talks and it's gone nowhere.
Well, we have a new board and you never know, but also.
You do never know, I agree, but, but anyway, do you, I, I don't second.
Well, I gotta get, I gotta get updated on the cases, so I, it's hard for me to say to agree with Jason in that. If I don't get an update of the cases, and to me, it may be a one-on, one by one until I see what we have. I mean, there's no way I can comment really to see whether that's the right thing to do right now.
What happened? You know, our solicitors are filing a brief, responses, preliminary objections on behalf of the township without two-thirds majority, and that's my concern is that.
Jason, I'm going to dispute that, I absolutely dispute that I did something that was unauthorized.
Real quick, Kristen, we made it a board decision not to discuss legal matters in a township meeting.
I understand.
And I think that's exactly what your side's thinking right now.
If I don't get a response in an email from our solicitor, then I need to ask in a public meeting, because where else am I supposed to ask?
There was directive by board members that, that happened and, and you were not at meetings that you were invited to.
Ken also wrote back and said he did not approve it, so we're here and I want to talk about it.
Did you have anything else?
I'd like to talk about the fact.
Well, I'm not going to discuss, nor do I think that.
So when, if you don't respond to my email, and when am I supposed to get an answer then? I mean, this is a public meeting, let's talk about it. I'm not talking about litigation and what way we should go, I'm saying.
Asked and answered, you didn't like the answer, moving on to your next point.
So, so you won't answer why the solicitor filed preliminary objections with only one approval?
Asked and answered, you didn't like the answer, moving on. So I'm not going to answer, if you want another answer, I'm not going to give you any different answer. You want to go to another question, great, I'm happy to hear it.
Then sure, yeah, I mean, as a chairman, I don't think you have, have final say in this, in discussing, you know, what gets filed and for what reason.
You can talk until midnight, I'll sit and listen, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to answer your question.
But I asked for the emails for the approvals and who, and that never got any response from anyone. So how do, how do, as a chairman of the board, how do you, what do you suggest I do? As a, as a supervisor who's not getting a response from a solicitor?
Asked and answered.
How do I, as a chairman, how do I remediate this going forward?
I think we can explain to, I think we can explain to the third chairman, to the third supervisor what occurred and let him make his decision. Then you'll have a three-member board.
He wasn't here, though, Kristen, I can't really let him weigh in fully, he doesn't have, I don't have a response to my question.
I can tell him, I can tell him my, 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 first of all, I agree with Kyle, this is not appropriate to be having this discussion in a public meeting, it relates to litigation. And I suggest that we take this conversation into an executive session.
I do agree, but however, I'm not, if you don't respond to my questions in email, I've, I've emailed since the end of June now and I haven't received a response. You know, so I'm, that's my, that's my concern. I need to know how to remediate that, how, moving forward? Are we supposed to have communication if, if it's only one-sided?
I would start by saying if you wanted to show up at the executive session on time, you would get those answers.
Kyle, did you not read Ken's email where I asked?
I don't need to read, I was there, I was there for a half an hour discussion where you were invited, you showed up a half an hour late.
Because it was the only night that I wasn't available, so I did show up.
Oh, I beg to differ.
I'm sorry.
Then had a hundred questions after you came with things that had already been talked about, and it's not my job to rehash things, to go back to a forty-five minute window that you weren't able to make when you were invited to, I'm sorry.
I was a half an hour late, Kyle, and, and so.
Do you have any other questions?
Yes, I do, I would like to know why you think that as a chairman, you can direct our solicitor to file on behalf of the township and make up these excuses where Ken actually agreed to, when he didn't. He emailed the board and said, no discussion, no approvals were given.
You were at the meeting, executive session.
For thirty, I was thirty minutes late and Ken said, if it didn't take thirty minutes to tell you got there, no discussion, no decision was made. So then what? So we have a solicitor who filed preliminary objections on what, on what ground, because I.
I would say if you were there, you could speak to the truth, until you're, when you're not there, I would say you can't speak to the truth, so right now.
Exactly, and that's, that's why I had asked Ken what the truth was, and he told me no decision was.
Again, I'll say it's hearsay because it's not coming from your, it's not coming from a direct source that was there.
It's coming from his own email address.
So.
All right, so there's no answer. All right, well, then. All right, well, then, I would say.
I would say, Mr. Winters, I would say that we will, we will bring Mr. Sherbeck up to speed on that matter. And we will give him the opportunity to, to understand